Okay, I'm gonna call our village board meeting for September 6th, 2022 to order. Roll call, please.
Nyla Frye.
Here.
Gary Hersberg.
Here.
Phil Willens.
Here.
Chris Zellner.
Here.
Aaron Moran. Joe Zitzelsberger.
Here.
Sam Kaufman.
Here.
Okay, the first thing we'll have is our confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, and online availability.
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wannakee Tribune on 9/2 of '22. The final agenda was posted at all three pub, um, official posting locations on August 31st and September 1st, and the final agenda and packet were made available online on August 31st. We also have two important requests for the audience members is to make sure we sign in on the sign-in sheet with your name, address, and municipality for accurate record-keeping. And those interested in participating in the public comment, um, to please submit your public comment form to me prior to the applicable agenda.
Okay, thank you. Uh, first up then is consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled?
Number three.
Or a motion? Number three?
Yep.
With approval of the other three items that were now still.
Okay, we have a motion to approve one, two, and four on the consent agenda. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Let's have it. Number three, Joe, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I'd wanna say I'm in support of this. I just wanted to get a little bit of clarification on a couple of items. So, um, the first one would be, this basically states that, uh, at least in the recommended motion, um, the application is for on-premise with premises defined as business building proper inside. Um, so basically I'm clarifying that this is only in the buildings, not on the sidewalk, you know, along Main Street, whatever that sort of thing.
Correct.
That's, that's accurate. Um, and then the second part was, um, I know red and white wine bars down in that area. I don't know if they're participating or not, but this would not have any effect on their existing license because they do have a patio and stuff, correct?
Correct, but they will not be licensed underneath this organized event.
It would be separate.
It would be, they'll still be separate.
Okay. Okay. That's all I wanted to clarify on there.
Okay.
So I will then, um, move improvement, approval of the temporary Class B license application for Wannakee professional women for the Wannakee Winter Wine Walk on November 18th, 2022 with premise defined as business building proper inside, not including any outside property connected to the business address.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
They've run that successfully for about five years now.
They have, yep.
And they've been very well received.
Yep.
Never had an issue being on Main Street.
Nope, they've done great.
Okay. Then I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Let's have it. Public comment, does anyone here who'd like to make a comment this evening that is on or off the agenda? It sounds like you have a, or it looks like you have a sheet there, Carla. Go ahead.
We have one. Linda Ashmore at 114 South Street, Wannakee.
Um, I have some questions regarding the Durst property swap that's gonna be used for the Six Mile Creek Trail soon.
Sorry.
That's okay. Um, I understand that Kent is only presenting the engineering study, but it would be helpful if the boarder staff could tell us some of these items, like the assessed value of the land that Durst holds and assessed value of the land that the village would swap and the acreage involved for each one of those. Um, and what's the topography of each of the land pieces? For example, is one marshy and one level? I don't, I don't really know. Is any of it in a flood zone? Um, are there any issues with putting in a paved by pedestrian path in a conservancy? When I think of conservancy, I think of land being left as it was before development, so I'm just not sure if that would fit. Um, and it sounds like there are other properties that the village would also need to get an easement from to do this. And so my question is, are those properties private or public? And has there been any discussion of the owners for those, like, those properties if they're willing to provide an easement? So, um, I'm just kinda looking for clarification on some of this stuff, and some of them might be presented when Kent does it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
That's all I have.
No more. Okay, then we'll move on. First item for business, presentation of results of Strand Associates Task Order Number 21-01, 2021 Six Mile Creek Path Planning. Does it, anybody wanna introduce, or just have Kent go?
Well, just, I mean, I just, we will try to get answers to the questions that were asked, but just to be clear, that's not on the agenda tonight, so you cannot engage in the discussion regarding the swap of the land with the Dursts. But we will provide, I mean, I think we've talked about some of that information, some of it, I'm not sure enough, I'm gonna have to talk to Kent to see if he has certain information, but we'll, we'll try to get those answered as quickly as we can.
Okay.
Is it, just to clarify, is it reasonable for Kent to provide answers to the extent that he can as part of his presentation tonight, or would you advise that?
If it's already incorporated into the study, then yes. If not, then no.
Got it. All right, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. So Strand was hired, um, late 2000, I think, and we, we did the study, did it in 2001. And the purpose of our study, um, was to look at the feasibility of providing a path or a connection from the Six Mile Creek Conservancy, which is over here to the right on your map, um, with Mill Road, which is over here to the left. The, the plan or the, this, this effort was basically to look at a preliminary design. Nothing was considered to be final. Um, it was more or less just look at the obstacles that are out there. What's in our way? What are the challenges with this route? Um, tried to look at minimizing impacts to, to residents, impacts to floodways, impacts to, um, existing utilities that are in the area, minimize impacts to wetlands, and minimize costs as well. Also, you know, cognizant of, you know, what's most expensive and what can you do to save costs. Um, so what I'll do, I guess basically now is kinda walk you through what this, um, study came up with. Um, again, preliminary, um, to build this thing, you would need to actually go out and do a boots-on-the-ground survey, which we did not do. We used aerial elevations, we used aerial contours from the county. Uh, and you'd have to do, uh, more, more study, more design, and, and more permitting, specifically permitting. There's a, uh, to do this work, it's gonna involve the DNR, Co-op engineers, um, all kinds of different agencies. So, um, I think with that, I'm gonna kinda walk you through the path from end to end, um, where this, where we placed this preliminary design, uh, some reasons why we need to put it where it is, and, uh, kinda just give you an overview of what's going on with this map up here.
If, if you need me to zoom in, let me know. Um, the refresh rate, though, is tricky if I do have to zoom, so.
Yeah, this is an awfully big file, so it takes a while to refresh.
And if you wanna, can go, are you gonna go, uh?
I'm gonna start at Mill Road.
Mill Road, okay. Let me, let me just go in one zoom, and then to the Mill Road, to the Mill Road side. There, you see that? All right.
All right. Um, can you go back to that last screen?
No.
I think I wanna paint a picture of the whole area first, so people understand.
Sounds good.
Okay. On the left side of your page is Mill Road, okay? Woodland Drive is this road, kinda wraps around, we lose it off the page, but then it shows up again here. Woodland Drive continues up that way, and, uh, this road becomes Dover Drive, which wraps more along the creek. This is Cardigan Bay, a small cul-de-sac off of Dover Drive. Along the bottom of the page, this is the Wisconsin and Southern Railroad. These are business park, uh, properties. And, um, kinda running through the middle of this, this white shaded line is, uh, Six Mile Creek. So it shows up as this lighter thread through here. The, um, the property owners along the way, I mentioned we tried to minimize impacts. The, the village owns the Castle Creek Conservancy, and it's this area bounded by this green border, okay? So that is the Castle Creek Conservancy land, it was beaded over to the village when this subdivision over here was created. The, uh, yellow boundary, uh, encompasses lands owned by the Dursts. The red property here is land owned by Dane County. The property owners along Dover Drive and Cardigan Bay actually own, um, land beyond where their property is built out to, that, uh, kind of extends out toward the creek. Uh, that land is mostly wetland, it's, uh, basically un, unbuildable, but, but it is owned by property owners, so it's immediately adjacent to, to their backyards. Another property owner in the area is, uh, Michael Simon Builders. They own this piece, kinda extends up into there and up to this green line. And that piece of land is retained by the developer of, of the Castle Creek Development.
Besides the Dursts, are, are tho, are any other private property owners involved in the layout as you've suggested here?
They, they were not, and no other private property owners were, were part of this study. Um, Dane County came into the picture, I'll, I'll explain that area, when we were looking at a good connection to Mill Road, and I guess I'm gonna start right there, if you wanna zoom in and out that.
Are you sure?
Yes. So, uh, what you see here is a path connecting to Mill Road and coming through the Dane County property, crossing Six Mile Creek. There'd be a bridge required here, and then making a ninety-degree turn onto the Durst property and then heading to the west. We looked at, um, not even involving the county and having this path connect up here to Mill Road. We didn't really like that connection because the grade difference here, there might be fifteen to twenty feet of grade difference up here. Um, it's not at an intersection, just not an ideal place. And when we learn that Dane County, um, is actually controlled by the parks, their park department, um, this piece of land, um, we, we inquired with them and said, you know, would you be, um, objectionable to having, um, a path through this portion of the property? And they said, no, of course not. We, the parks are for this purpose, um, we'd, we'd be happy to entertain this, you know, work with us, but, uh, we would, we would support a path or a trail in this piece of land. And because, and because of the proximity of this connection to existing paths along Woodland Drive, along Mill Road, we thought this was a, a very good, an ideal place to connect. So that's, that's why that location was chosen. The path color here is shaded, it's, it's, uh, brownish in color, and that's to represent that this would be, need to be a boardwalk type path. There, there is grade differences up in this area to overcome, uh, so we, to, to make it from the elevation of Mill Road, um, and cross the stream, we would have to have an elevated-type structure path to, to take it, um, across the stream. So, so a lot of this would be elevated up here. Once we cross, we can start bringing that path down to grade, and the reason we'd wanna, trying to get it down to grade is so we can be, it can, um, it can become an asphalt or stone path, or even a, you know, a dirt path, but, and, and that's in the interest of minimizing cost to the property. So, um, certainly you could have boardwalk the entire way, but our, our objective was to, well, we don't wanna, wanna make this feasible and reasonable, so, um, we, for this exercise, are showing an asphalt path across this portion of the path. This grade coming down from here, um, we would, it would need to be designed to meet ADA accessibility standards, so, um, it may take more runout than what's showing here. Might have to go a little further, but, uh, when you build something like this, you wanna make it accessible, and that would be one of the objectives, um, in final design, is to make sure we're meeting that, uh, ADA accessibility requirement. Okay, as I mentioned, uh, the path continues, uh, this preliminary drawing, uh, through the Durst property and then enters the village's property in this area. I wanna just go back here, Todd, a little bit. Yeah, so, one of the, um, one of the, uh, things that, um, we knew was an obstacle or something we had to deal with was a Madison Metropolitan sewer. Back in the seventies, um, you know, if you, if you don't know, the village, wastewater all goes to Madison Metropolitan Sewers District to treat it. And this is a large interceptor, large diameter pipe, that runs underground, carries a lot of the village's, um, wastewater to the plant as it heads through Westport and beyond. So, they have the rights to have this pipe there, it is there, and, um, our question was, well, are we okay to be within that easement? Can we, um, you know, are, are they gonna object to us crossing that or being around it? So we, so we made the part and phone calls to them and said, hey, this is, this is something we're trying to study, get some ideas on. Um, would you be objection, objection, objectionable to allowing us to be within that, um, easement or cross it? And what we learned from them is that they, in the seventies, really didn't get by themselves good access to their own sewers. They have trouble getting back here because of the grade differences we talked about here, because of this creek that runs through there, because Castle Creek, there's no paved path or anything in there. And they said, we, we'd love to have some kind of access path or some kind of better access to get to our facilities, because some of the things they need to do are to, uh, inspect manholes, um, televise pipes, monitor flows, um, you know, correct problems that might be out there, clogs, whatever. So, um, they said, you know, we'd be very interested in doing this, we might even be willing to partner with you, uh, so that, because we recognize we're getting some benefit out of this too, so. Uh, they were actually a willing participant in, um, any future design, and certainly from the village's standpoint, you would want to make sure, um, the, uh, they are kind of in on, in on what you're doing here with the final design, if it gets to that. So, the red lines represent the easement that they have. The green centered in that easement is the actual pipe location. Okay, Todd, you can move to the west. So this is about the location where the path, uh, there's a, there's a steep hill coming up here, or there's a elevated land up in this area, and it's very steep from the top of this bank down to the creek. That steepness kinda goes away down here, and we thought this was, um, a good place to cross the stream because on this side of the stream, we're at about the elevation we need to, such that when this bridge crosses, we have adequate clearance above the stream to provide for navigability and that kind of thing. So, um, this place, it's, there's nothing mad, I mean, there's, doesn't have to be there, but, um, this was a place that we chose to cross because of the, the grade, um, of the land around this, the area, around the stream right there. However, we do get into the more, another boardwalk situation, and as we cross into this area, these lands, as I mentioned before, um, that are owned by the property owner on this side of the green line and by the village on the other side of the green line are wetlands. We did not do a full wetland delineation, that's something you would do at the time of final design, but we have enough information from DNR that tells us, because of the soil types and because of the, um, you know, the water conditions there, that these are likely wetlands. And that's why we have shown, um, more of a boardwalk path through that area as opposed to a paved path. Another obstacle, um, we have to encounter is, um, ATC owns a power line that runs, uh, along the railroad tracks. It's actually outside of the railroad right-of-way, but it's, it's in this first fifteen feet south of the railroad right-of-way. Um, and, and as you can see, the, the Six Mile Creek runs through, um, you know, just to the south of that. We have kind of a tight pinch here, um, of village-owned property. So, um, you know, one of the concerns is, well, can we make this work through here? And if this is a boardwalk, um, it is tight, but there is, there is, I don't know, fifteen, twenty feet of separation here to the stream, there's a little bit of room there. We think we, you could thread that through there, um, worst-case scenario, uh, I mean, again, we're trying to avoid any impacts to these properties that the village doesn't own, we don't want to bring homeowners in necessarily unless they're, they're offering it or they're a willing participant and they, they're wanting to, but for this study, we just try to minimize the amount of impacts and, and property owners involved. So we think there's space here to thread this through here. Coming up on, on this location, there's actually a third bridge that would be required to get into the actual Castle Creek area that's currently accessible from Division Street. And from there, um, just getting up to high ground, it doesn't have to be here, it can be wherever you wanna connect, but we just kinda represent it coming up here to, to the highest ground, um, that would allow you to take that path through Castle Creek Conservancy and, and whatever, um, material you want, whether it's a dirt, gravel, or, or paved. So that's, um, that's the, basically the, what we, what we came up with for a preliminary design. Mentioned a couple of the obstacles already, the MMSD sewer, the power lines, mentioned the wetlands. When, when you're working within wetlands, um, the DNR and the Corps are gonna have specific requirements for you. First of all, they don't want you to be there, they don't want any impacts of wetlands. In a case where we have wetlands, most certainly all the way through this area, there's no way of not impacting wetlands. So in those cases, you have to come up with a plan to minimize the impacts to those areas. A means for minimizing would be to use a boardwalk and not, not a paved path. So, so, um, there are wetlands on the site, a delineation, as I mentioned, would have to be done, uh, 'cause there might be more that are discovered, whether, whether they're along here, um, you know, somewhere in there. We just, we, the wetlands that showed up were mostly in this area, and so we know that, that you'll be dealing with wetlands in that area. They are permissible, though. They can be permitted with the right, um, measures and mitigative efforts. Lastly, in terms of obstacles, well, actually not last, we got two more, but one of the more important ones is the floodplain and flood issues. Um, we know that there is a floodway through here, we know that it floods, there's anecdotal data that shows that this is underwater a lot. And so, um, we, I think we made it known right away that, you know, we can, if we build this thing, we have to be careful about filling wetlands to the point that you might impact upstream owners, um, in terms of raising that flood elevation, that might push water into their property that wasn't originally going there. So, one, the way we looked at this, and, uh, it's what you would do, you'd do a flood study, and we did an abbreviated one, now keep in mind, we have a preliminary design here, um, it is, um, it is what we used to, um, come up with this, um, this basically, results that we did. But the, the stream itself, the DNR has, um, hydraulic modeling for that stream, okay? They, they know what the hundred-year flood cross-sections throughout that whole stream look like, okay? And so we have that lot model, it's an, it's an electronic model, and we intersected that with this preliminary design of the path. And that preliminary design, mind you, has both boardwalk in it, it's got at-grade asphalt path is what we chose, um, as a, for this purpose, um, and it also has the bridges in there. So, um, we knew that we are adding some fill to the floodplain, but when you intersect these, it kinda tells you, all right, what happens to that flood elevation when you have this existing model with the new information? And we did find that it did raise, um, the flood elevations upstream of this a little bit. There are ways to mitigate that. And so we did some trial and error on some things to mitigate that flood raising, and those included, um, you know, improving hydraulics, um, in the stream to allow the existing stream to get below Mill Road Bridge more efficiently, included, uh, doing some channel reworking in this area, uh, just improving the channel hydraulics, improving the, you know, the waterway itself. And through mitigative efforts, we noticed that the model did drop, so that hundred-year flood elevation reduced back down to, um, where it is today and possibly even lower, but. Our exercise was to determine, is this possible? And I think we just, we learned that it is possible. Now, possible with, I'm a, okay? So it'd be very important to involve the Corps and the DNR along the way, involve them in what you're doing, what your goals are, they, they will basically approve you along the way so that you don't get down the road too far and find something that isn't permissible. But, um, in our experience, um, with some channel, um, grading and some channel, um, improvement and efficiencies, that, um, we will not be raising the floodplain elevation there with a minor amount of fill that we're doing. So those, those were some of the obstacles we looked at. Oh, lastly, uh, we did a cursory check of archaeological, um, events in the area. Sometimes you might have, uh, especially in this area, Indian mounds, there are burials, mounds, there's also historical, historic properties that can't be, you know, you have to kinda get approval to do some of this stuff, and, um, there is none, we did not find any in this immediate area, there was something close, but, um, um, our understanding is it's a, it's gonna be, uh, kind of just a fill-out of form and show us what you're doing and a kind of a rubber stamp approval for the, to sign off on the archaeological. So, having done all that, um, our last goal was to, um, come up with what this might cost, and, um, we use this picture, which is part boardwalk, part asphalt, three bridges. We don't like to just go out on our own and guess what these are gonna cost, so we called the contractor, um, we actually called the one we worked with in, uh, in the town of Westport along County Highway, um, who has a boardwalk and bridge out there. We asked them about constructibility, hey, can you do this? And they, they gave us tips and pointers on where they would need access, they might need some easements here and there to, to, um, make it more accessible and lower costs. But they said, yes, it's feasible, um, they kinda gave us some ideas on costs of different segments here and such. And so, in the end, um, our opinion of cost in $2,001 is about 2.1 million, and, um, you know, and that's again, kind of a, kind of a cursory, broad look at it. That is all I have, and I'd be happy to take questions if the board has any.
Can I ask a question? If a project like this, if you went to all boardwalk instead of asphalt, because, um, how much does that, is there a percentage that it would raise it, or do you have any idea?
Well, um... If you're going off the top of my head, Nyla.
Okay.
I think, I don't think you would double the cost of this project, I think you might add a third more, you know? Yeah, I don't really know.
Yeah, because to me, it doesn't, in my mind, but I'm probably totally off, it just seems to put an asphalt in, in a project like this, it just seems kinda counterproductive. I mean, that's just my thinking, so.
Again, it can be wherever you want. It would be pretty simple for me to get that answer.
Okay.
Get it back to the office if you'd like.
Thank you.
Kent, I'm not sure if this is you, or maybe Bill would have this one, but in the last five years, how many flood events have we had? And, and I mean, just kinda taking a guess, do you think where the trail level would be right now? I mean, is it once a year, is it underwater, is it?
It's hard to say, I mean, I, I'd give it at least...
I'm trying to think back.
In the last five years, probably at least one, one a year. Yeah. And that'd be a block at this point.
Those hydraulics you mentioned, will that help Village Park a little bit also?
Depending on how much you do, um, that's a little, it might be a little far upstream to see this benefit, but, um, I would say it would promulgate up into the Castle Creek Conservancy a little bit.
Cause that floods probably a little bit more often.
I don't know if you could do enough right in this project area to...
Thank you.
...help that.
On the Mill Road end, um, as drawn right there, what would that grade look like for the boardwalk?
Well, this, so Mill Road is elevated, um, it's kinda wooded, so it's hard to see, but it drops off pretty good, I believe a storm sewer discharges in this area as well. So, coming off of here, you would be at the elevation of Mill Road and probably, as you get to the stream, maybe eight to ten feet in the air, so. And that, that might be level across here, or it might drop a little bit, but, um, you, this path would be close to the elevation of Mill Road and Woodland Drive, most likely.
So would the construction of that be significantly different than the boardwalk on the other end, or similar construction techniques just higher up?
Yeah, it would be, it would be similar, so, the way this would most likely be built is using helical piles, they're basically screws that go into the bound, the ground that this, um, structure is supported on. And, um, the structure would require cross-bracing the higher you go, they can, you know, they can do that, so. Okay. This, you know, the bridge here would be a different type of structure, more, I mean, it could be one of these, um, boardwalk-type manufactured, but I see it more like a, um, a precast, um, Corten steel, self-weathering steel, like bridges that you see out there on, on the County Highway, um, project, um, over on Six Mile Creek here, uh...
Maybe similar to what's over by the library even?
One by the library, yeah. That's why I, that's what we had priced out here, in our opinion of cost, yes. Okay. At three locations, one, two, and three.
Okay. And then you had mentioned MMSD potentially having interest here because they could get access. Would they need access to get trucks into this space, and was that something that would be considered here?
Yeah, so what they were interested in is, is only to have a pickup truck get through here. They're not talking about large back trucks or heavy equipment, they just simply wanted to get a pickup truck in here that they could carry equipment, um, to access mains, to carry flow meters to, they have a, I think they have a, a small jetter that they might be able to have on the back of a truck, but...
How would you see them accessing?
Well, um, I guess I would see them, I mean... Well, I guess I would see them coming in right here and then coming in there.
Literally right over the boardwalk?
Yes. So, there's, without getting too far in the weeds here, the, the, the boardwalk structure and the bridge structures would, would need to be designed to carry the load of a certain design vehicle. And if you make it a pickup truck with a certain amount of load, it can be done that way. To actually get funding from the DNR for some source for a boardwalk through here, they require a higher level of access. So you're talking about like, like a larger vehicle. That would, that would make this design standard greater. You'd have to make it more beef or it'd cost more money, but you're getting funding presumably. So, so they are interested in a pickup truck size and that's certainly, the one on County YAM is designed to that, and a pickup truck. Thanks. Sam?
None specifically, other than I'd be interested in the number for all boardwalk.
Good.
And I think we could probably use the hydraulic improvements anyway, whether we do the path or not. I, I think, you know, Madison Street is another one that could eventually use improvements like that with reducing our flooding. But thank you for the presentation.
To Sam's point, I don't know if this will be you or maybe Bill. Because that in Wanakee, as it sits.
Is this?
Where are we, we're doing the hydraulics.
Oh, is the improvements in Wanakee? Interesting. So, improvements here would be in the Village of Wanakee. Dirrs are in the town of Westport. Improvements down here, this is a piece of property owned jointly by the village and the town of Westport. So, we, we did see some benefits to some hydraulic improvements down here. So that might be a joint effort between the village and town of Westport.
And I believe when this was first being discussed in two thousand one, Westport was interested in, in this whole project. Is that correct in participating?
I was kind of on the fringes of that. I don't have a lot, I believe it's true.
Sue, do you have that?
Bill would have a.
Or Bill?
Yeah, Tom said it on the first meetings and discussions about doing a path. Because they were interested in possibly a joint venture connecting the third trail system.
Aaron?
Well, thank you. This is well done. And I guess I'm not, that's a lot of money, but I mean, outdoor recreation is expensive and making things done well to minimize the impacts is also expensive. I think the, I was going to ask about MMSD, what was there? It reminds me of the Badger Mill project they just did. And that had a lot of good benefits to the actual stream itself too, which I think we could use. And like some of those wetlands maybe could even be improved. Obviously, they're very important, but, you know, it's hard to tell if they're doing their job the best if you're not down there. So, um, yeah, I, I mean, I, maybe I'm just too much of a dreamer, but I think this would be awesome. And if we can get all the pieces together, it's good to have this like chunk of knowledge of what we would need to do. I, I think this could be great, but there's obviously a lot of obstacles. I agree that, I mean, I think the asphalt seems, it would seem kind of random isn't the right word, but it would be nice to all boardwalk. Also, boardwalk is just as hard to maintain, et cetera. Does MMSD prefer one or the other? Do you know, like?
No, that, they do not prefer one or the other. They do require a gate if it's all boardwalk with railing.
Okay.
So at certain locations, they would need some ways to get off path.
Okay.
So they would need some sort of gate or needs to step down off that. And, you know, the village might want that anyway, because along here, you can have nice access to the stream if, if that is in the village's possession, so.
Um, yeah, I think that's all for me right now.
Derek, you have something?
Well, I think the access that Kent just made, you know, and Bill knows this, and then Sue, you know, Sam, because he cleans the creeks also, that access, when a tree goes down or something happens in the creek, it sure makes it a lot easier when you can get access back in there, because otherwise sometimes you're just kind of stuck. So, I think that's a good benefit for the public works.
I have another question.
Go ahead, Hannah.
In the beginning of your presentation, you mentioned that the DNR, and I didn't catch what other groups, would rather have us not on wetlands. So my question is, with this project, could we be creating issues? Have you seen before in projects such as this where, where there's issues that you don't foresee in the beginning?
Well, I mean, there's always things that come up you have to deal with. In terms of avoiding and mitigating wetlands, we've definitely been down that road. Not only with the path on M, there was, there was wetland losses out there. And when I say losses, you have, you have these pads that support the framework of the boardwalk. Well, the pad is three by three. And when you set that on the ground, it impacts nine square feet of wetland. You have to add all those up. But there's a way, there's a process to deal with that. And if you mitigate, you basically try to minimize, you show to the DNR that you've minimized, you have to do an alternative analysis report where you, where you say, well, this is what we need to do. We can't do this because of, it won't go there. We can't do this, it's too costly. We are minimizing the impacts to wetlands, and this is, this is the approach we're taking. And they would weigh in and say, yes, that makes sense to us. Or, could you think of this? Could you do more? So you come up with this best fit that allows you basically to get permitted. And when you've identified how much wetlands are impacted, if you're losing them here, you can mitigate those wetlands somewhere on your own site, if it's feasible. More often than not, there's actually wetland banks that are out there that have been set aside for the villages and towns and governmental agencies to purchase wetlands that the DNR goes out and buys and says, okay, we got this bank of wetlands. And if we lose, say, a quarter acre of wetlands, we would have to, it depends on the type of wetland it is that we're losing here, but we might have to buy a half acre or a full acre. So we'd have to buy more wetlands than we're disturbing here. So it's all part of this mitigation plan. And it's all kind of in the process of final designing this project.
Yeah, so that brings up another question. We have property owners along there, so if, if they're, if we do something to develop a trail and there's major flooding, is the village responsible in any way because we developed the trail to those other property owners?
Well, we would, in order to build this, you would need permit, you need to be permitted to show that you are not raising any flood elevation. So, it might flood. It might still flood, but it's not going to flood any worse than it would have been had we not been there, so.
Okay, but then are we not responsible then? I mean, I'm asking, are we responsible if there's a major flooding issue after we developed it, developed a trail?
Is it more of a liability question?
Yes, yes.
Oh, I can, I mean, I would say based on what Kent just said, no, we're not responsible because we did not cause more water to go onto that other properties than otherwise would have occurred in light of the mitigation efforts that were put in as a result of the construction of the trail.
Okay, thank you.
I think all these, all these are tricky, but, I mean, that's, that's the benefit to the people, because everybody wants to get along Six Mile Creek and get down in a wetland. And, and that's why they want to walk and bike and access it. And the forest, you know, their trail goes right along creeks a number, a number of areas. Pheasant Branch. I mean, that's why people love those trails, because they can actually get access to areas that otherwise they never get to see.
I think, like, three bridges, obviously, you know, it's more expensive. I'm not saying just throw a bridge in for fun, but they look important. It's like, my brain goes like, that's three chances someone's going to get to like, have a cool little experience with the water. Like, that's just my perspective. But that, the triangle of land, that's not, that's out of the wetland plain, that the village owns, yeah, right there, is that just mowed grass right now?
Yeah, it might be farmed too.
Okay, so we could put in some prairie or something, like.
Illegally.
Yeah. So, maybe there's some land improvement we could do there.
Okay. Sam, did you?
Is the cost estimate you provided for composite or wood decking?
I believe it's wood, Sam. Yeah. That's, we had yellow, yellow pine lumber on the other one, so I think we used those numbers. Composite is, is another level of expense. Good question.
Okay. I, I mean, I, I don't know what we can all talk about, so I'm cautious of what I'm saying because you had that opening statement.
Well, I'll raise my hand if I believe that you're.
I mean, really where this is coming from is our conversation involving the dirrs. And none of this is possible until that would take place to start with. Is that fair to say?
So, we've, we've, we've been before you before on some of the discussions that are not on the agenda tonight. And that, well, keep in mind, that still has to come back to you. In other words, what I was asked to do and why I'm doing it right now, working with the attorney, is coming up with some type of cost-sharing agreement that would allow potentially for the sale to move forward. But that all would come back to you where we could provide some additional answers. And I would just, for the, the public, I know there were some questions regarding cost as part of the public comment. That was in, the, the appraisals that have been done, that information was in the village board packet the last time that we were here. But, yes, in other words, the feasibility study is, is, and the ability to move ahead is dependent on the, the, the other issue, the, the issue with swapping the land.
And this, this is just very preliminary too. This is, this could happen in one year, five years, 10 years, 20 years, never. But we have, the other one is why it's contingent on this is even a possibility. Is that okay to say?
Sure. I mean, I guess, I mean, maybe I came out a little too strong. I just, we can't get into the discussion of the terms and conditions of an agreement with them, or I would say, it's, it's, obviously there is an interrelationship between the land issue and the feasibility study. I just want to make sure that we don't go too far down that path.
And where this all came in as well is accessibility to this property is non-existent really for us as a village. It's very difficult to get into this land. We have to get permission at this point, I think, to even go on to our own property because it's 100% landlocked. Correct? Can you say that?
Not, not exactly. There is a thread through here, but you do have to cross the stream, which makes it very difficult.
Fairly landlocked. We'd, we'd have to build some sort of bridge to get in there.
Yes.
At this point, so.
And is there enough space to do it?
Well, we're saying yes. We talked to the contractor about this, the tightness of that spot, and they said, you're done.
Chris, this makes me think of the trail that we put in on Madison Street west of the library, that, that made a whole area of parkland available to the public. And this is something that'll make the whole area of parkland available to public and let us connect up with that, I don't know the new name of that trail behind the, in the trees. It's a native, native.
The Teddy Bear Trail.
It's a native trail name. I don't know, but it, in Westport, but it gives us great connectivity.
All right. Any other questions for Kent? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kent.
Thanks, Kent.
Okay. Next, we have, this is a take action on discontinuing use of public education and government PEG cable channel. Todd?
Yeah, thanks, Chris. So as you know, we've been discussing for some time now technological transitions in relation to the design of our IT systems in this room and our recording capabilities and our systems to provide a hybrid opportunity for people to be both in person and watching and actively engaging us online simultaneously. So, as we've worked through that, other elements of what we do now has kind of come to light. And I've had to really research and figure out what the, what the current state of affairs is and how what we do in changing to hybrid might affect any of those or vice versa. So, in that, and a lot of the work that Keith does actually with us, which we appreciate, we have appreciated, we still do, relates to our PEG channel, Public Education and Government Channel. You heard a lot about that 20 years ago, that it was a very common tool for communities. It was an element of franchise agreements, which were allowed then. A lot has changed in the state law that has diminished municipal control over some of those, some of those aspects. But, but technology has moved and the use of PEG channels is, is more rarity than it is a common occurrence. When some of the franchise laws changed, in fact, our channel went, I think it was 19 or something like that, up to what is now 979, only offered for cable TV subscribers. So if you are going for satellite, over-air, TDS, or any streaming service, the PEG channel is not available to you here in Wanakee. So, as I looked into this, there, there have been historically three users of our PEG channel, the school district and the village and the town of Westport. The district, you might remember, used to broadcast some games and other things. They do no programming any longer and they don't care to. So I contacted administration to find out what their intent was or wishes were. They've, they've fully transitioned to their YouTube feed and, and other technologies. The town of Westport has a few slides that they might show, like officials, how to contact a local official. I contacted town of Westport administration. They admitted their slides are out of date and they actually don't care to keep them updated. As far as village programming goes, probably the most notable item is that we do still, thanks to Keith's help, broadcast our village board meetings. Those are our broadcasts onto the channel. Usually, Keith, you have those up within a, just a couple of days of, of every meeting. And then they run on a rotating schedule until the next new meeting. At the same time though, Keith gets us a digital copy of our meeting recording and then we manually upload that to our, our YouTube channel. I can tell you that we, we get routine hits to watch that on our YouTube. So I, I can quantify the use that we're seeing there. I can't necessarily quantify the use that we see on our PEG channel. The, I guess, experiment I did was I put a slide, a rotating slide on the channel a little more than a month ago. Is that still on, Keith?
Yes.
Okay. So it's been going about a month and a half now. And on, on that, I asked viewers, I put a big yellow highlight on it, and I said, if you utilize the channel, let me know. I'm interested in hearing from you. Contact me directly so I can understand what you, how do you like to use it? And I, I have received no, zero, zero responses. But I can't tell you that it's not watched. We, I, I don't, that information is not available. Viewership information is not available for us. With that said, I did reach out to Charter Cable, who we have our agreement with, or enables us to run the channel. And I, I reached Mike Hill. Mike is the, oh, sorry, let me bring it up here, is the government affairs director for Charter, because I wanted to inquire what he's seeing from other communities in his service area. He wrote back that they have several access channels in, in sort of the same position that we're in. Limited use in the position of kind of questioning it's, whether it's making the best use of technology to get the information out. He indicated the web-based platforms are much more flexible, easy to care for, communities are choosing to go that direction. He says several channels like yours each year are what they call decommissioned, taken, taken off the air. It is a, it's a very simple process to undertake. Basically, he said, send them an email officially from the village saying we no longer care to use it, and that, that's all there is. I did ask the question, what if we want to use it again someday? He said that they would discourage it, but there's a process that we can work with them on. And that, that's the extent of the information I received from Charter Cable. So my question for you is, as we move on in transition, administratively, I think the. So my question for you is, as we move on in transition, administratively, I think the opposite route to broadcast on Charter Cable, to go from what will be a digital recording via YouTube and Facebook, which will occur with our new technology, to then go through a process to take it up to our PEG channel if we continue to maintain it, is going to have a level of labor intensity to it. And Keith and I haven't necessarily worked through that. But before we do, I want to introduce the concept of having the board consider discontinuance of the channel. And with that, that will give us direction on what to do next to be ready for transition and making sure we don't miss a beat. Because if you do want to continue it and you want to make sure it's broadcast, then I got to start doing some things to make sure that that is in place and in order.
So you're looking for our feedback right now?
Yes.
Okay.
And today, we don't have to, today, we don't have to make firm decision. We're looking at the new technology, probably installation. I'm, I'll bet we're going to be into December, probably at this point, as we're still getting equipment in and the furniture's coming in, so we've got a little time still for decision-making.
Comments?
Yeah, a couple of them. First, I want to confirm this is not live during our actual meetings, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Second part would be, if we're going to discontinue it, what would that timeframe look like? I assume we put some sort of a message out saying it's going away. We wouldn't just say, yeah, go ahead, take it away next week.
I think we could be strategic about communicating that properly to those who might be viewing.
Okay.
Okay. Nyla?
Are there any costs associated with this?
No, in fact, Brian, you and I were talking about that. There is no contractual connection that we have with Charter or Charter has with us that obligates, obligates us financially.
Okay, thank you.
Sam?
Are there any savings that we'll be getting by doing this?
All right.
Well, the question might be, and could be calculated, the amount of time that, you know, Keith has in managing, managing the channel. While not an advantage to Keith, I would say the advantage, cost effectiveness, will be to the village in that Keith's time won't be involved. We have had an agreement, and we do pay Keith for his time and management of recording our meetings and helping with the channel. That will be an efficiency gained with the transition to new equipment because it'll be managed from our desk here and programmed and prepped for us that way. So, but I can, I can do some more calculating on that if you want me to get a real, get more specific on that with Keith.
Okay.
I know my grandma watches it, my little grandma. And I don't, I was interested that no one said anything to your slide about, like, say hi, that, you know, if you like this. But I am curious how intensive it would be to put things on there, not just for my grandma, but I don't know if there are people out there that don't watch it online or those things. And as we try to be more accessible, like, if that's a population that this is the only way they access things? I wouldn't want to do that just out of.
Being that this is the first time we're talking about it publicly, I suspect Roberta will share information in the newspaper, and I still welcome that feedback from potential viewers. The other thing I could do, if you want, is additional research in the area, potential viewers. I could reach out to Cindy, see if some of her clients at the senior center view it regularly. I can also do some social media posts asking that probing question of potential viewers to let us know, because we're, at this point, just discussing the potential, and we'd like to know what viewers like.
And I like to do a lot of outreach. It's like, you don't want to get rid of something if it like has potential, but also you don't want to do all this work if no one is, you know, watching. So I think if we can see if there are people out there that would be, this is their only way.
What about putting a slide out that is more of an explanation? You know, something like, what if, what if we discontinue this channel, you know, and then give them information where to make contact to give their opinion on it?
I could, let me see what I put on for the slide here. I think I essentially was.
I thought it was something like that.
Is it something like that?
I was essentially was asking that. I had my phone number and my email available.
Okay. I didn't know how extensive it went, but sometimes if people don't completely understand, they just ignore it.
Yeah, and I could, I could, I could even layer in a couple other slides and really push that content and call out another.
It's right on. It was in the packet.
How did I word it?
Due to continuing changes in technologies and communication tools, the village of Wannakee is considering whether to maintain programming using this government access channel. As part of this decision-making process, we are trying to better understand channel viewership. If you are a regular viewer, please contact us by August 31st to let us know that you are watching this channel.
And then my contact info.
The contact info, please respond by that date.
That feels wordy to me.
Yes, I'm thinking as short and simple as we can get it.
I think that might allow, I mean, allow, let's say, you know, we go into technology in, you know, December, but maybe we say, you know, in November, if we're going to drop this, you know, we look three months with messages like that out to the public. And maybe we identify three people in town who really like to watch it on TV, yet it might give us the opportunity to help them to say, hey, you know what? There's other alternatives. Can we help you understand how to use your laptop or your computer to, you know, to view this? And just try to work with the people out there we can identify.
Do we have somebody who can do that well? And without fully getting into that business?
We can have Erin to talk to her grandma.
Pollock Library provides great services like that already.
Grandma on TikTok and all.
This is going to be easier for everybody.
Providing they have the technology.
Right.
Oh, they already do it.
I know, I know you have filmed.
No, they do.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that they all have.
I'm not as computer literate as most people.
I mean, my real concern is if there's somebody who, as their only media source, is Charter TV. It's very possible, and that's what I've, that's what I've been trying to get to. So this discussion here, in the public view, with media coverage is going to help answer those questions even better.
Keith, Keith.
I can just add a few things. One, the ability to do this live has always been there. It's just that nobody had said they wanted it live. It would just take a minor cable connection to make it happen. When TDS came in with their TV internet service, we did have the option to also get on theirs, but it was fairly expensive. The equipment that was needed, and we would have been, had to pay for that, was fairly expensive. So at that time, it was kind of dropped.
Is that still an alternative with TDS, do you know?
That's a question you'd have to ask them. But I know at the time, when they first came in, that yes, we could have done it, but we would have been responsible for the equipment to get that. So, that's it.
God, I'm also curious, because of the changes in the way cable TV works now compared to 20 years ago, since what's being broadcast is essentially a digital channel, Charter or Spectrum has not been able to give you any sort of viewership count to that? Or is that not a road that you've really gone down?
I know I asked Keith about viewership. What did you, you had indicated, you're not aware of a way.
No, I don't know of anything. And as far as our signal through cable, it's not digital. It's an analog signal to their head end. It's really strange.
But, yeah, but from their head end.
But from their head end.
Yeah, yeah, and that would be, I guess, what I would be curious about if, I mean, since it's going out, I don't know if the boxes are checking back in or not.
I'll reping Mike at Charter and see if viewership information is available. I actually think I may have asked that. I'll double check on that.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm not opposed to either way here. It's, we want to make sure the public has access to everything. But what I do know is that when I was little, we had black and white TV. I haven't seen those for sale lately. We had box TVs, and I haven't seen those for sale lately. And then we went from 13-inch TVs that are giant TVs. And we went from eight-track tapes to cassette tapes to DVDs or CDs, all the different things. So technology advances, and our population tends to have to advance with it. So this is one of those things, I feel like, with our upgrades, that we're spending the money to get the upgrades, access to our library, all the different things, people will still have access. I think technology is very different than paper. You're welcome, Roberta. People like to have something in their hands to read, and that's why it's important that we have it in the paper as well. But I think we should keep it until we have all of our technology, for sure, up and running, where it's online, people can get it, you know, whenever they want, watch it live. It's just my take on it, especially with you doing the study. And I agree with Joe that it's a little wordy, but I think the gist of let us know you're watching was there. And we got zero responses, so.
I'll give it a fresh view, and we'll continue that process. And I'll do a posting on our own social media to ask for viewership contacts as well.
Perfect. Is that good with everybody?
Yeah, do we need to actually take an action then?
No, not tonight.
Only unless you wanted to say, let's decommission, which we don't need to do at this point.
We can wait on that, if that's okay with everybody.
Yep.
Okay. Number three under business items, approve temporary Class B retailer's license application for Wannakee Chamber of Commerce for jump around with One Community Bank Tailgate on September 24th. I will be recusing myself from this, not making any comments. Can I answer questions if people have questions about the event? I don't even know.
I would stay out of it entirely.
I'm staying out of it entirely, so.
I make a motion that Gary Hertzberg connect this.
You got it, Gary.
Okay.
You want this? This makes it easier, just trying to find it quick.
Does somebody have background on this one?
Do you have this one?
This is, this is the second year for this. And it went off without a hitch last year. In fact, the only problem with it last year is I couldn't get there, so I'm planning to try to get there this year.
That is a huge problem, Phil.
Yeah, it was, for me, so I like it.
Yeah, other board members?
The only, the only thing that I saw, as far as the retailer's license, there's not anything as far as time goes. I don't know if that's a concern at all. There's, later in the agenda, there's an amplified music piece, and that does have a time component, so.
It says game time dependent with the two options.
So I don't know if that's a concern that we would need to put any timeframe in there, or if it's just granting this for the whole day is okay.
Game days, I don't know when they're officially released, but it's hard to schedule around things.
Well, we're going to address the music as a separate item later, so.
Yeah, yeah, then the music will, it takes care of that. But I'm just wondering if, from a serving standpoint, if we need to say, you know, it has to end by 6:00 PM, 9:00 PM, you know, whatever, or.
Okay.
Or it's just a blanket thing.
Nothing.
Nyla?
Nothing.
I was at the event last year. It was well-run, a nice crowd. And I think it's pretty much the game, and I don't know how long after the game it went on, but I don't think it, I don't think it lasted into the evening, so.
No, I would think once the game is done, everything kind of wraps up.
We have a motion?
I move approval of application for a temporary Class B license for the Wannakee Chamber of Commerce for a jump around with One Community Bank Tailgate on September 24th.
Second.
Okay, motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have an amplified music permit for the Wannakee Chamber of Commerce for One Community Bank Badger Community Tailgate.
Here are the call for 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And same thing, I make a motion to approve the amplified music permit for the Wannakee Chamber of Commerce for One Community Bank Badger Community Tailgate on September 24th, 2022.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Chris, back to you.
Motion to second.
There you go. Motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.